This episode is brought to you by Meow Wolf. Manifest unique family memories at Meow Wolf Denver. Quantum travel is the most comfortable way for earthers of all ages to explore a playground of imagination. And why visit just once when this immersive experience reshapes every time you enter? C Street is my favorite because C Street has this vibe of like 80s dystopian. There's like slime coming down the walls and there's weird posters. And then of course, the secret club. With the annual portal pass, drop by Convergence Station as much as you want for less than the cost of two adult tickets. So if you plan to go twice, it's worth it. Plus enjoy discounts, special offers, and so much more. Get the annual portal pass and spend quality space time with your favorite earthers today. Learn more at meowwolf.com. That's meowwolf.com. Today on City Cast Denver, is the epic Comcast altitude dispute finally coming to an end? Will Nuggets and Avalanche fans get to watch their teams push for the playoffs? Producer Paul Crowley and I are talking about a promising recent development, plus city council's push to ban pop and listener takes on our weird oyster eating habits. Today is Tuesday, March 12th. I'm Bree Davies and here's what Denver's talking about. Hey, Paul.
Hey, good morning, Bree.
I think the first thing I want to start with is something we talk about all the time, which is unions. And there's some new development.
The unions are unioning.
They are.
So the Denver Art Museum, their employees have been working on this. If they went public in January, they probably been working on it.
For a long time.
A lot longer than that.
I'm sure.
Take a while. But the news is last week they held their vote, which they had to do because the dam didn't voluntarily recognize their efforts back in January.
Okay, so that's how it works is if you're, if the entity that you're trying to unionize within doesn't say, okay, we recognize your union, then everybody that's eligible for it votes on whether or not to create one.
I'm pretty sure, yeah.
Okay, that makes sense.
Yeah, so that vote happened last week and it was, and it was pretty overwhelming. It was 120 of the 250 workers at the dam voted yes to organize. And that was 59 people voted against it.
And did you reach out to the dam for a comment?
Well, I should say actually before we even get that, back in January, so the reason why they're doing this, these workers, they, they want what everyone wants really. They want better pay, they want better work conditions. But then there's this other note that they mentioned, which was interesting transparency. They want better transparency from their management. Now, we should say, you know, the Denver Art Museum is a sponsor on the show occasionally. That has nothing to do with how we're talking about this, which you should know.
That's a good point.
Directly when I tell you that that has been my experience as well. For the last year and a half, I've been trying to book an interview. Yeah, exactly. With the head of the museum, Christoph Heinrich, to talk about these antiquities that they're slowly repatriating from their archives.
Yes.
And I have been stonewalled. The answer has been no every time. Now, that's not the case with this particular incident. When, when the vote happened, I did reach out for a comment. I was directed to the comment that they've posted on their website, which says, "The museum supports employees' rights to unionize and is grateful for all those who voted and exercised their rights in this process. The museum is committed to bargaining in good faith with the union towards a collective bargaining agreement," which is the next step. They're going to start talking about a contract.
Okay.
So I was like, hey, thanks. And then the response I got, which is the first time this has ever happened to me via email, is just a simple emoji reaction. Thumbs up. Thumbs up. Thanks for checking in, I guess.
I don't, I love, I kind of love this because I know that emojis are now just part of our language in how we talk.
I like it too.
But there's a lot of room for interpretation with emojis.
Yeah.
Like how you feel about, it says something differently to every person. So thumbs up could, could mean a lot of things like.
Could be like.
Stick it up your ass.
Hey, good question, buddy. Thanks, thanks, little guy.
Congratulations, you asked a question. Or it could be like, yep, that's right.
Yeah.
So, well, I guess we'll never know.
We might know, I don't know.
All right, well, let's talk about the, honestly, I have been dying to talk about this story since it broke last week.
Oh yeah, me too, me too.
The altitude versus Comcast dispute. Someone walking into this conversation for the first time who's never heard of this issue, what is altitude versus Comcast dispute? Sounds very boring.
This, this very boring sounding phrase about these two companies, you may or may not know anything about.
Giant companies in Colorado.
Yeah, but it makes headlines consistently, especially around this time of year, because this is when inevitably our Nuggets and our Avalanche are heating up and gearing up for playoff runs. It's happening again, people. They're both great.
Yes.
Yet very few Denverites can watch either of these teams on television, which is why this dispute is such a problem again this year. It's been this way for five years. But here's, here's what's happening. The way people watch sports has changed. And the old model was companies like altitude, which own the teams. This is, the altitude is the broadcaster that puts on the games and it's owned by Cronky Sports and Entertainment. So Stan Cronky, him and his son Josh run this company that also, they also own the LA Rams and the Arsenal that, I think just Arsenal. Sorry, EPL fans. I'm sure I said that wrong, but the soccer team in England.
Soccer team, okay.
Yeah, yeah. That's their other thing. So what they used to do is a company like Cronky would contract with a cable provider like Comcast to pick up the altitude TV channel, which shows the games and add that to their cable package. So people who pay for cable could get Nugs games along with, you know, the cooking network or whatever.
Yeah.
But because the way people watch sports has changed, the, the economics for both of these companies have changed. And now for the last five years, we have, we have reached this impasse where neither side wants to compromise. So Comcast is saying, it's not worth it to us. Most of our buyers, which by the way, they're the predominant provider of cable in the Denver metro area, they have the majority of the market. And they're saying, most of our buyers, our customers, don't care about sports.
Really?
So for us, it's not worth the asking price that the Cronkys are putting on the Nugs and the Avs games.
That is wild to me because it almost feels like a public service that you should be required to offer because it's part of our city. But that is, that's an interesting argument and that's what's kept us sort of in the stalemate.
Yeah, I mean, they've had lawsuits, like last May, there was a, one of the lawsuits that altitude filed against Comcast for antitrust. They settled that out of court last May. But still, we're, we're at this impasse stalemate where neither side really wants to budge. They don't see opportunity, I guess.
Well, and the other thing too, is this extends to other ways that you can watch the games. Cause we thought about getting the league pass, the NBA league pass to watch all the games. But you get the NBA league pass and altitude games are blacked out.
Right, right.
So we, if we wanted to, if we could try to find another avenue to pay for it, we still couldn't do it. So what, what I think that maybe this, the next guy we're going to get to maybe can solve this, but all I'm thinking about is we may or may not illegally pirate a lot of our games because there's no other way to watch it.
Well, the, the altitude folks would say differently. Affordably is the problem because last year, the Cronkys made this big deal about licensing their games to this service called Fubo TV, which is like yet another streaming service. It costs like $60 per month.
Yeah.
And I signed up for a free trial last year to watch the Nuggets run. And it, you know, it's a good service, but $60 a month is a lot.
Especially when we're paying for all these other streaming services, which I know cable doesn't want to hear about, but like, I don't know what to tell you.
Yeah, I mean, yeah.
Well, we're talking about this now though, because there's a new guy on the scene who has made some big promises. Who is this new guy?
Well, there, there's a couple of interesting new things, I think. There's one other thing that happened about a month ago that I think has really kind of sparked this change where maybe, I don't know if it happened directly. I haven't talked to anybody at altitude or, or the Cronky organization, but Aaron Gordon, the star Nuggets player.
Mr. Nugget.
He's so good. But ahead of the NBA All-Star game, he spoke out about this, which is very rare because he's essentially talking about his boss, since he works for the Nuggets and the Cronkys. He says that this impasse is hurting his career because he feels like if he had more exposure on TV, he'd have a better shot at the All-Star game, which probably, yeah.
I would be inclined to agree as well because he is one of our players right now that is so much fun to watch and his profile is rising nationally. And he's in a market like Denver that's getting more and more popular, but people in Denver can't watch him do what he's doing. I feel him, I get it.
And think about the other players on other teams who are hearing him say that and thinking, well, maybe I don't want to sign a contract to play in Denver.
Because I imagine it impacts maybe sometimes your sponsorship deals and all kinds of things. If nobody can see you, you can't build that momentum around yourself as a, you know, as a, he's not a younger player, he's kind of in the middle of there, but he's definitely hitting his like stride.
Yeah, his prime earning years.
Yeah, so he, he spoke out.
Yes, but what you were alluding to, this new guy, there, there's been some shuffling at the altitude Cronky organization since Aaron Gordon's comments. They, somebody, an old executive stepped away. I don't know if they were fired or let go or what, but there's, they, they were separated from the company.
If anybody's got some Cronky Sports Entertainment hot goss on what happened with this man, please let us know.
Yeah, I actually lost my source inside the organization. So please do, you know, I'd be happy to keep you anonymous. Denver@citycast.fm is the email. Anyway, so, so the Cronkys, they brought this guy Kevin Demoff, who's been the president and chief operating officer of the LA Rams in LA. And they're, they're, they brought him to Denver basically to take over the altitude situation. They gave him a big promotion. So it's now his job to, to manage these negotiations as well as altitude sports and entertainment generally, and the Cronky Sports and Entertainment Radio and Outdoor Sportsman Group. That's according to Westward's report on this.
And this guy, Kevin, is just coming out the gate hot.
Oh my gosh, it's a totally new direction as far as I can tell from the, the Cronky folks. Cause at his introductory press conference last week, Kevin Demoff says, "It's our job as leadership here at KSE and altitude to deliver a solution." He's talking about the Comcast dispute. "Nobody wants to hear us talk about why it's hard. Nobody wants to hear us talk about the cost. What they want is for us to solve this. I promise you, we will spend every waking hour doing that."
I have to say, that quote was on fire. I felt that as a fan. I was like, yes, I don't care what is going on. You're, we know how much money is in sports. Figure it out.
Yeah.
And he's saying, I'm going to figure it out.
It's interesting.
It's incredible. So reading this, Paul, I was like, okay. So has the guy that's been in this position prior to this gentleman, Kevin, taking over for the last five years, has he just been really bad at negotiating? Or like, is this like a change of heart for Cronky? Like, why has this guy got the golden, do we know?
I mean, no, we don't know. We don't know exactly, but we know what this is actually about. It's about money.
Yes.
It's about where they think they can make the most money. And if Cronky feels like licensing the games to this cable package isn't going to yield a big enough increase in viewers that he might be able to sell like more, that much more valuable ad time during the games, then maybe it's not worth it. And then think about the other constraint, you know, the experience of going to see the games at Ball Arena is very good. And it's more special when the games aren't on TV.
Yeah, but you have to build that fan base because I would imagine that most people in Denver aren't going to a game every year. If you want to get more people to the games, they probably need to see the team to understand if they're good or not. And the thing that I struggle with is that we've been talking about this Cronky Town redevelopment, right? This, this, what's going to happen around Ball Arena? There's parking lots everywhere, there's big plans. Doesn't he want the city to be invested in that? Part of that would be, our teams are good. I care about our teams. Let's make this something that's like, to me, it's like one of those, like, I guess it's, you can't see the direct result of why it's important to make people fans of the Nuggets. But there's an indirect thing, which is like city pride. And I don't know, it just seems strange to me that we've been going this long.
Yeah.
Especially after reading that the Phoenix Suns are free. And that's a team I love to hate playing because they are good and they are annoyingly good and they are close to us. Devin Booker is so good, but they can watch, if you have an antenna in Phoenix, you can watch every game. And that's how it used to be.
Which is fascinating.
I love this idea. I know we're not going to get there, but.
Well, maybe, I mean, I would, I would imagine Cronky is probably having conversations with his, his colleagues over in Phoenix, seeing how much money they're making. Cause they're probably selling ads for a lot more money if more people can watch those broadcasts just for free.
Right.
Which, you know, maybe that's, maybe that's a good path forward. I don't know. I mean, they're obviously thinking about a lot of these different options because here's another quote from that press conference I mentioned. This is from Josh Cronky, so Stan's son, who I think runs, is more involved in the actual like the teams themselves.
He's also homies with this new guy.
Oh, really?
They went to college together.
Oh, interesting.
Yeah.
Anyway, so Josh Cronky says, "When Kevin and I sat down to talk about this new role and this new opportunity, the first and only thing we discussed was how to get altitude back on the air for the majority of the Denver area," he said at the press conference. "This is truly the issue that hits me to my core and I promise it's going to be something that we're going to try to find a creative solution to in the very near future." A creative solution.
I love the energy. I'm, I'm really believing it. I'm hoping because I would like to legally watch games.
Same.
You know?
Same.
And I'm going to watch them no matter what, so.
I would, I would prefer to be doing it legally. It doesn't feel great to be, you know, using the services.
Allegedly, we may or may not be doing that. We don't know.
I mean, you talk about the Suns, that, that's an interesting option. They broadcast for free. There's other teams who are doing similar things like direct to consumer. The Arizona Coyotes, they have a bit of a specific situation because their arena is in shambles, but, and, and so like they want to keep people engaged in the team in any way possible, but they launched their own streaming service too. For $12 a month, you can watch, you can watch all the games.
And the other thing you were talking about, like they, maybe the in-person experience is more what Cronky's going for, getting people to the arena. The Nuggets are good right now. We just bought seven tickets for our family to go in the 300s, in the nosebleeds. It was $500. So again, this might be a once a year, if that experience for most Denverites, that's really expensive.
Well, it's like the difference between having a smaller number of super hardcore fans that are going to be willing to spend hundreds of dollars and maybe buy jerseys and maybe buy hats versus the people that are just like the more passive, watch it on TV, you know? Maybe you don't make as much money from those people.
Yeah, I don't know. Fan, fans, fans have to be built, is all I'm saying is you've got to give them a reason. So I also just want to give a shout out to Katie Cheshire, who wrote about this for Westward. We'll link to her story. I was actually just talking to her in the kitchen about it because we were talking about Bruce Brown. We missed him so much. We still miss you, Bruce. You could come back. You could wear cowboy hats every day and look normal here. We know that's your vibe. Anyway. All right, well, we'll keep, we'll keep literally watching this story and praying that we get to watch more games legally.
Yeah, I mean, both teams are so fun to watch right now. The Amelies just signed a couple of like really exciting guys on the trade deadline day last week too.
Yeah, how are the Avs doing?
I mean, they'll be in the mix.
They'll be in the mix.
I don't watch regular season hockey, as you know.
I always forget that about you, the person that wears the most, the person that wears so much Avalanche gear, that we went out as a team to Gaetano's the other night for dinner and you were wearing an Avalanche hat and the server assumed we were going to a game.
Oh, yeah.
And I was like, no, we're not, surprisingly. Okay, well, oh gosh. Also, I'm sorry, you said that you don't watch Avalanche during the regular season. I watched the Nuggets during the regular season. They're crushing it. They're probably going to get there, so could have another championship on our hands.
Does Monday at the office feel like a storm? Not with Microsoft Copilot. That feeling when Copilot gets everyone up to speed instantly? It's sunny again. When Copilot simplifies complex data so your teams can act, that sun's shining on a beach. And when Copilot uncovers hidden insights, you're on that beach with your people and you find buried treasure. That's Microsoft Copilot. Learn more at microsoft.com/aiforall.
Shipping can make or break a sale, so optimize how you ship your orders with ShipStation. They make it easy to automate and manage orders no matter how big your business grows. And they might even be able to help reduce shipping and warehouse costs. So optimize and keep up your momentum for growth with ShipStation. Sign up for your free 60-day trial now at shipstation.com and use the code POD. That's shipstation.com with the code POD.
We're going to talk about this sugary soda ban.
Yes, so Axios Denver reports that city council is considering a new proposal to nudge sugary drinks out of the reach of Denver children. Bree, what, what exactly are council members Chris Hines and Serena Gonzalez Gutierrez working on here?
It's pretty simple. It's this legislation that would ban fast food companies from offering pop with their meals or soda, whatever you call it, pop, soda. And if I'm understanding correctly, you could still, outside of a kid's meal, purchase a pop for your kid, but they're asking, or this legislation would require kids' meals to come with water, sparkling water, dairy milk, and maybe dairy milk alternatives. No soda, no pop, no soda, no juice.
Huh.
Is what they're saying.
And it's only at fast food places?
So far. That's what they're saying. Similar legislation has happened in Golden Lafayette and Longmont already. And I think it's happened across the country. There's a couple of places, but I would assume they're focusing on fast food because of the access and the ease of it. I don't, I don't know. It's not like pop isn't out there in the world everywhere else.
Yeah.
At the grocery store or a sit-down restaurant. I was just at Tokyo Joe's the other day. They do offer milk, water and juice. And then at the tail end, they'll go, or you can get them a soda. So they, it's like they're almost trying to already do that. And that's the thing that I thought was strange about this legislation is I've noticed on kids menus, they already are pushing just like juice or milk. So.
Yeah.
There's already been a little bit of a shift, but this would require even no juice, which is crazy.
That is interesting. We, we had this fight at my high school, you know, a long time ago, 15 years ago. At our high school cafeteria, we, they took the soda out and the people were all upset about it.
Well, I remember the, the outrage over when soda companies were allowed to start putting pop machines in more schools. That was a big deal. So I, I understand that perspective of just like the act, limiting the access because kids and sugar, it is a situation.
Well, tell me about it. How do you, how do you manage it with Montgomery?
Well.
I mean, everyone's different, but.
Right, I would say we generally, if we go to a fast food place, I ask for a half water, half lemonade or a.
Okay.
Half water, half Sprite.
The baby Arnold Palmer.
Pretty much, just to water it down. Because even at home, he doesn't drink full strength juice. It's like half, it's mostly a way to get them to drink more water. So we're already watering it down. Or we were at Chiba Hut yesterday, so he got half water, half Kool-Aid. But he was loving. But you know, you mentioned something, you, you, you talked about this nudge, this idea of nudging people towards doing quote better or whatever. And that was Councilman Hines sort of argument. This is nudge legislation. We're trying to nudge people to do the right thing, which feels loaded.
You want to know where this comes from, this idea? It's kind of a new thing. The, the word nudge refers to a book by Cass Sunstein and Richard Thaler.
Oh, yeah.
Who are these like foundational behavioral economists. And, and they had this idea that like the best way to make policy is just these like little tweaks of like changing settings or like changing options and guiding people to make the right choices for themselves. It was huge during the Obama administration. They loved this.
Was it, did they work for Obama?
I think Sunstein, yeah.
Yeah, because one of my favorite podcasters, Michael Hobbs, has a show called If Books Could Kill.
Did they do nudge?
Oh, they did nudge. I'll send it to you.
Yeah, we'll put a link in the show notes.
They kind of debunked that nudging does anything whatsoever. That was their argument. So I, I mean, I, I have heard this before, but what I thought was weird about Hines' argument was he said he likened the proposal, I'm sorry, this was Axios piece.
Right.
He likened the proposal to recent laws charging a bag fee or opting in for food utensils. This doesn't seem the same to me. This seems like a moral judgment about parenting, more than an environmental issue with plastic bags, to me. But it's, to be fair, Councilwoman Gonzalez Gutierrez is a mother of three children and she's one of the people behind this legislation. So she, I assume she's thought about the moral components of this?
Presumably, presumably. Maybe we'll talk to her about it at some point. That reminds me, I saw this letter to the editor in the Denver Post today that cited that. Can I read it to you?
Yeah, please.
Do you think? Okay, so the person, David Forsythe writes into the Post, "Denver City Councilwoman Serena Gonzalez Gutierrez wants to ban certain drinks from appearing on the menu with kids' meals and restaurants because she needs help instilling healthy dietary habits in her three children. Seriously? She is their mother. That should be all she needs. I for one am tired of the Denver City Council, along with seemingly every other politician from either side, trying to micromanage our lives. We as a city, along with a state and a nation, are facing very serious problems and this is what our city council is focused on? Either the serious problems are blown away out of proportion by our city leaders or our city leaders are simply too inept to deal with them."
Wow.
That was pretty fiery.
It was. I, I don't agree that they shouldn't be working on other things like this. Like city council handles so many kinds of issues every day. They are not taking all their energy and putting it into this and avoiding something else or not dealing with something else. So that's just kind of what city council does. They deal with all aspects of the city. And so that to me, I don't, I don't agree with.
I mean, and she cares about it clearly, Gonzalez Gutierrez. It's, she's passionate about it and we've, her district voted for her.
Totally.
She gets to do it.
I live in her district, so.
Wait, no, she's at large.
Oh no, I'm sorry.
We all voted for her.
I'm sorry, yes. And when she was, was she in the House, Senate? I voted for her whenever she, from her previous position, but yes, she was at large. So you're right, she's representing the whole city. I'm assuming she's probably talked to some of her constituents about it, for sure. The thing that, also the thing that I thought was strange was it, it may, they may be able to include sparkling water that doesn't have sugar in it, just like a La Croix style thing. That is, sparkling water wreaks havoc on tiny teeth too. I'm a little bit, nah, about that. In general, I'm a little bit like meh about this whole thing because.
You think there's a chance she just saw like a six-year-old drinking a Liquid Death and was like, that's not right. That ain't right.
Montgomery was drinking one of those yesterday at the dinosaur quest or whatever. It's the only water they had. So I don't know.
One last thing on the sugary drinks ban. So this is my hobby horse, but Denver is the place where there is the highest per capita concentration of people working in the beverage industry.
Right.
We also are home to the soon to be the largest Pepsi bottling plant in the country.
Yeah.
Do you think that our city council members are thinking about the beverage industry and the potential impacts when they're considering a policy like this?
I don't, just because, I don't know, I'm such a raging soda drinker. It's my worst thing. I don't see this impacting the market at all. People are still going to be buying a ton of soda. To me, no.
Yeah.
I don't think they're thinking about it. I genuinely think it's coming from a good place, wanting to nudge parents towards better options for their kids when it comes to sugary drinks. I get that. This is, I mean, Paul, you and I grew up in the 80s and 90s. This has been a constant conversation for the last like three decades. Are kids drinking too much soda? And it, yeah, it just kind of comes down to parenting, I guess. I'm a little annoyed, if anything, because also if I go to a fast food place, my kid wants a pop. So I'm going to have to buy a pop separately, because I can't get one with this drink.
Or go to the 7-Eleven across the street.
Or I just pour mine and, you know, a little bit. So we'll see where it goes. We'll see what, we'll see what, you know what? We'll see what the rest of council thinks. I am interested to see how this plays out.
One last thing.
Yeah.
It's the end of the Tuesday show. That means it's time to hear from you, our brilliant and hilarious listeners, about the things you care about. So let's just pull, pull a couple of these comments from the CityCast Denver hotline voice mailbox. Ooh, looks like we got an email this time. Bree, do you want to read this email?
Yes. Hello all, from Kevin N. "I've come to rely on your show for insights into Denver. Happening's great and small, and answers to questions I didn't know I had, such as, quote, 'What's the deal with those weird Epoch Times billboards around town? Imagine my shock at the sight of my podcast app playing one of your recent episodes with these all too familiar blue and yellow stripes in the ad banner.'"
Oh, there's a picture. Oh, that's perfect.
"I've never read the Epoch Times and do not plan to. Your reporting didn't alter that attitude, but added depth to the otherwise flat surface that can be my only view of the Denver-built environment without the kind of hyper-local stories you provide." Where's the picture?
It's just scroll down a little bit. It's a screenshot of the phone.
Oh, my God.
Yeah, it's right there on the bottom, this, this banner.
No.
I mean, that's funny. Hey.
Wait a minute.
This is maybe an opportunity to do a little education. We don't choose that.
No.
Some of those ads are programmatically inserted or applied to our content on Spotify.
Is it Spotify? Okay, I was like, I don't, whatever app this is, I don't use an app that has ads on it like that. So I've never seen an app like, or an ad like that before.
Interesting.
Okay, so Kevin N. is nicely pointing out that we did a piece on the strange Epoch Times billboards that Rocky Mountain PBS dug into the backstory of, which was pretty weird. And he's just pointing out that that ad popped up for him on our show. Oh, no.
Sorry, Kevin.
All right, well.
That is very funny that happened. Funny coincidence. They're, they must be buying so big right now. And you know, we didn't talk about on that episode when we first discussed this, was the fact that the, some of the folks who are involved with the Epoch Times are adherents to this Falun Gong, this like anti-communist communist Chinese like ideology. And the same folks, some of the same folks are also behind that Shenyin, like ballet performance, which is also currently advertising like crazy.
I was just going to say, drive around Denver, wander around Denver, you will see more billboards for Shenyun than almost anything else.
Yeah.
I see them all the time. So, also, I just want to point out that Kevin N. signed his email, "Best regards, Kevin N. of a beloved Baker Alley house." I love a Baker Alley house. They're cute. I've actually, I looked at one in Baker recently. It was $500,000 for a house you had to go outside to do the laundry. So, eh, but we love you, Kevin. Thank you. Thanks for sharing that. Really interesting. All right, Paul, do you want to read our next text?
Yeah, this is from Nick. Nick writes, "Hi, this is Nick from East Colfax area, and I just listened to the Monday show about what to do in March. And I just want someone to please tell Peyton Garcia that she should not insist that you have to just shoot an oyster down your throat hole."
This has been haunting Peyton for days.
Yeah, we've been talking about this. Nick goes on, "You definitely can and should